I call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education. Today is our regular meeting for December and the date is December 17, 2024. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Serene.
Here.
Mr. Trimble.
Here.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Here.
The first item on our agenda tonight is awards and recognitions, and I think a lot of people are here for that. And as we were commenting, we love the headwear that people are wearing for the holidays. It's very great. Thank you for being so festive. And now I will turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Elizabeth Kirby, who will cover the awards and recognitions.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin tonight's awards and recognitions with our Tiger team members of the month for November. These CHUH staff members have been recognized by their peers and community members for going above and beyond to contribute to the culture of excellence in our district. Your colleagues who nominated you for this recognition have shared these heartfelt words. And so as I say your name, please come to the front and stand, and then you can go to the side and we'll come together for the group picture. All right, from the Board of Education, Bus Depot, Delau, and IT, Rebecca McDonald. She guides staff on how to use student assessment data in thoughtful, purposeful ways. Recently, she gave us great instruction on how to navigate the centralized reporting system. I can already see how her lessons are helping our staff grow in this part of the work. From Boulevard Elementary School, Beth Privet. Ms. Privet is new to Boulevard, but she has truly been an asset to the school and especially the students. She is reliable, punctual, and willing to help out in any way that she can. I have observed how she works with the students and the positive effect that she has on them. From Canterbury Elementary School, Monica Michael. Ms. Michael has developed a terrific relationship with her students. She is a caring peer professional who truly works hard to help her students succeed. She is a team player inside and outside the classroom, offering help whenever she can with whomever may need it. Her laugh is contagious, and she brings such kindness to our school community. From Fairfax Elementary School, Michael Green. This is Michael's first year working at Fairfax, and he is already making a difference. There are many children who look up to him. We are blessed to have someone who can relate to so many kids here. From Garrity, Deborah Buckley. Debbie is a fantastic colleague to work with. I have seen students thrive in her room because of the structure she has in place and the care and kindness she shows them. She is also willing to help coordinate staff's social activities to bring our team together. From Heights High, Melhaw Woods. Madame Woods always provides a quiet place for students during all of her breaks. She is constantly looking out for her colleagues, and she is always positive, making the workplace such a pleasant place to be. From Monticello Middle School, Stephanie Jackson. Mrs. Jackson has a good heart and cares about our students. On any day, you can find her in the hallways assisting students and teachers as needed. In the classroom, Mrs. Jackson works with students of all abilities and helps them build skills for life. Mrs. Jackson has what it takes to get the job done at Monticello and does it every day. From Noble Elementary School, Pam Nguyen. Ms. Nguyen possesses a natural ability to connect with young children and create a nurturing, supportive, and engaging learning environment. She takes care of the whole child, ensuring they all have hats and coats and watching over them at breakfast. It is her first year with us, and it's like she's been with us all along. From Oxford Elementary School, Jamie Cannon Geiser. This is Mrs. K's first year as a classroom lead teacher, and she's brand-new to the district. Mrs. K has come into fifth grade and made amazing connections with our students and families, and she is never afraid of a challenge. She pivots her classroom management to fit the needs of her students. She brings so much sunshine to Oxford. From Roxborough Elementary School, Gail Baradowski. Gail is very personable and fair when working with the students. She goes out of her way to get them treats for special occasions and checks in on them when they are having a bad day.
I'm going to give the Florida Dan Heinz, who also serves on the Heights Schools Foundation
She is also a tutor in my classroom during the morning.
Board of Trustees, to recognize our Holiday Card Contest winners.
I couldn't meet all the diversities I have this year without her.
This is really exciting.
And from Roxborough Middle School, Ahmed Allen.
I love doing this on behalf of the Heights Schools Foundation, which, for those of you who are not aware, the Heights Schools Foundation is our alumni association, and all of the
Mr. Allen has joined us this year as the dean of students.
work of the Heights Schools Foundation goes into enriching what happens in our classrooms.
He brings a refreshing attitude and genuine willingness to help the students and staff be successful.
And the Heights Schools Foundation also really noteworthy, worthy-ally.
He is kind, respectful, and dependable. He's also a Roxmed alum, and his Tiger Nation prize shines through.
This is also the organization that creates the Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame.
All right, so winners, just congratulate all the winners.
Yeah.
But we have the Distinguished Students Hall of Fame, I think, right here.
We can take a real quick photo. We're right here in the center.
Yeah.
We're good, actually.
So thank you, Superintendent Kirby.
All right, I'll take a few on three. Ready? One, two, three.
The district, in partnership with the Heights Schools Foundation, hosted the fourth annual
Perfect.
Thank you all.
Holiday Card Contest this fall. Students around Tiger Nation from preschool through 12th grade were encouraged to craft an original piece of holiday-spirited or winter-themed artwork for a chance to be featured as the cover of the 2024 Superintendent's Holiday Card. We received nearly 100 creative submissions from students of all ages. Before we bring up our award winners, let's take a minute, actually, okay, six minutes and 40 seconds, to look at a video compilation of this year's submissions.
Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize the winners of our fourth annual CHUH Holiday Card Contest. I'm going to give the Florida Dan Heinz, who also serves on the Heights Schools Foundation Board of Trustees, to recognize our Holiday Card Contest winners.
This is really exciting. I love doing this on behalf of the Heights Schools Foundation, which, for those of you who are not aware, the Heights Schools Foundation is our alumni association, and all of the work of the Heights Schools Foundation goes into enriching what happens in our classrooms. And the Heights Schools Foundation also really noteworthy, worthy-ally. This is also the organization that creates the Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame. But we have the Distinguished Students Hall of Fame, I think, right here. So thank you, Superintendent Kirby. The district, in partnership with the Heights Schools Foundation, hosted the fourth annual Holiday Card Contest this fall. Students around Tiger Nation from preschool through 12th grade were encouraged to craft an original piece of holiday-spirited or winter-themed artwork for a chance to be featured as the cover of the 2024 Superintendent's Holiday Card. We received nearly 100 creative submissions from students of all ages. Before we bring up our award winners, let's take a minute, actually, okay, six minutes and 40 seconds, to look at a video compilation of this year's submissions.
So the school community had the opportunity to vote online to select a community choice winner, and Superintendent Kirby selected the top three overall. The winners will be awarded a $50 cash prize or a Tiger Nation swag bag, all courtesy of the Heights Schools Foundation. So students, when I announce your name, please come up to receive your prizes along with a print of your artwork.
Nice.
If there are art teachers and after-school program coordinators are here, these are the people who really get things done, along with parents, please come up with them. As well as, we know many of you set aside time for your students to create their submissions and continuously provide with artistic guidance. Please remain up front for a group photo. So congratulations to the community choice winner, Christian Dates. Christian is a fifth grader at Noble Elementary School and a Tiger Nation swag bag recipient. Bravo.
Nice.
Yes. In third place, we have Elum Donau Adansu, a seventh grader at Monticello Middle School and recipient of a $50 cash prize. In second place, Nina Billick, who is a fourth grader at Canterbury Elementary School and recipient of a...
She is a returning rock star. Apparently has all the Tiger swag she can wear.
And for the overall card selection, congratulations to Samaria Smith-Williams, an eighth grader at Roxmedal and recipient of a $50 cash prize and featured artist on the Superintendent's Holiday Card.
Dan, do you want to be in this photo?
No, you do.
You should be in this photo.
No, I just read the names. They did the hard work. Oh, you know what? You're right, actually. On behalf of the Heights Schools Foundation.
You should be in the photo.
Let's tiger up here. There we go.
What's up, Sam?
So cool. Oh, my gosh. All right, say bikini.
Give a photo. Do you want to take it?
Yes.
Give them a second. The parents today.
Congratulations to you all.
So nice.
I know.
I'm so envious of that talent. I mean, it's really incredible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I never could draw a straight line, so.
If I could. And Nina, I know you're getting ready to go, but I say, "Oh, dear," every single time I see deer in my neighborhood. Like, it's become, my daughter rolls her eyes when I do it, because I'm like, "Oh, dear." And she's like, "Ah." Yeah, so I really appreciate it then.
Oh, my goodness, there's a newbie.
Little baby.
I didn't realize we had a new person here.
My firstborn.
I was impressed by your phone cover and shirt combination.
Yeah, little baby.
Bet you did.
Dan, thank you for presenting that.
Of course.
That was just delightful.
That's the good stuff.
It is.
Nina, I think that's her fourth time winning either first or second place. She's only, maybe her third. She's been winning since second grade.
So the next item on our agenda is public statements from the audience, so it's the public address. The board asks that you please refrain from mentioning specific students or employees by name in your comments. If your comments involve a student or an employee, the board asks that you please not address the individual by name. We ask that you remain cognizant that we are an open meeting and possibly in the presence of students. Also, please limit your comments to three minutes. After three minutes, the microphone will be muted. Thank you. We have one person who signed up this evening, Angel Fasolo, and her topic is, "This district will spend the upcoming year wasting resources in court rather than the classroom due to allegations of civil rights violations." Ms. Fasolo, please come to the podium.
Tonight is the last regular board meeting of the year. Perhaps as we enter 2025, this district can make the New Year's resolution to not violate the civil rights of students. Looking at the court docket for the upcoming calendar year and beyond, it looks like time and money that could and should be spent educating and supporting students and supporting the staff tasked with those jobs will instead be used to pay lawyers to defend some of Tiger Nation's worst leaders in two federal lawsuits against this district for alleged Title IX violations. Yes, there are still two active lawsuits with multiple plaintiffs and more than a dozen named district administrators alleging district failures, retaliation, and district violation of student civil rights when these plaintiffs reported sexual assaults by classmates. According to the publicly available online docket, the following was entered after the November 20, 2024 Case Management Conference. The parties are instructed to read the attached order in its entirety. Case is assigned to the complex track and deadlines have been established. Submission of Proposed Protective Order, December 20, 2024. Submission of Proposed ESI Agreement and Amended Pleadings, Joiner of Parties Without Leave of Court, February 27, 2025. Expert Reports for Party Bearing the Burden of Proof, September 3, 2025. Responsive Expert Records, October 20, 2025. Expert and Nonexpert Discovery, February 27, 2026. And Dispositive Motions, April 25, 2026. Phone Conferences are also set for March 3, July 25, and September 25, 2025. As for the second of the two federal lawsuits against the district, a case where both named defendants were promoted by this superintendent and this board after these allegations were made and after the case was filed, an in-person status conference was held with the court in November, and a telephone conference is set for January 17, 2025. Surely, this is kept and will keep many in leadership busy as well as the lawyers. Finally, a board member recently posted a call to action to urge leaders in Columbus to vote no on bills that could violate students' rights. While I'm not opposed to calls for action or student advocacy, I find it ironic coming from a district leader here who is neither calling for action regarding this district's many alleged violations nor has calls for action to advocate for many other vulnerable or violated populations of students or staff in Tiger Nation whose civil rights were violated, who were mistreated, or who were retaliated against. When will any board member promote a call to action to stop the district's pattern of violating state and federal laws and stop mistreating based on race, class, gender, and disability? There needs to be a call for action here. Hopefully, the courts can force action if district leaders continue their pattern of civil rights violations.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Fasolo. We respect the right of our community members to express their thoughts, opinions, and points of view during our public comment period. That time belongs to you. But we do find it necessary to address the repeated statements made by some about the district's response to the very sensitive and important matter of the Title IX investigations, particularly regarding the named defendants in the lawsuits. As we have said, we are committed to responding promptly, thoroughly, and equitably to allegations of violent or inappropriate behavior. Equitable treatment also dictates that individuals are not assumed to have engaged in wrongdoing based solely on a case being filed, and this includes not being placed on leave or subject to disciplinary action unless other facts warrant that response. We consistently review information brought to our attention and make appropriate determinations based on that information. These legal matters must be allowed to play out through the appropriate legal channels. And I want to be absolutely clear about this. No staff member named in one of these lawsuits is facing accusations that the staff member himself or herself engaged in sexual harassment or sexual assault. To say or imply that is inaccurate, unfair, and reckless. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
I motion we consider the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the consent agenda? There's a lot of items on it.
There is a lot of items on it. Love talking about field trips?
I love all the donations.
Yes.
I want to thank everyone. I mean, there's a lot of kind community members and organizations making donations.
Our barber shop is going to the Midwinter Convention in San Antonio. We've got kids traveling to Phoenix to...where else? Going all over the place. Oh, another group going to Phoenix. Yeah, it's just so exciting to see our kids being showcased around the country and visiting other places. It's just fantastic.
Well, I also think we've had a notable resignation, and so I am just grateful for the impact that Coach Mack has had on our district. But I'm also hopeful for the individual who will come after him, who will be able to build on the foundation that he has established over the past decade. And I hope that they will continue his commitment to academic achievement, community engagement, and to helping develop our young men into leaders.
Thank you. And I can't overstate the importance coaches play in the lives of our kids. They're mentors. They are often parental figures, and it's a loss to lose him.
Yeah.
He's also been a leader among the coaching community. And he will continue to be a leader among the coaching community. You know, I know that he is very highly regarded out in Chardon. He has created this Bridge Builders Program, which is really fantastic, and he will be missed. And it will be exciting to see who comes in and takes us the next few years down the road. Wish him all the best.
And I want to congratulate him on his Cleveland Browns High School Approach of the Year Award. It was fantastic for him.
Yep.
Any other comments on the consent agenda?
Happy to see so many academic success tutors being added, including Ms. Beth Gobieski, who was a teacher at Noble. My daughter had her at Noble and is now tutoring over at Oxford, so great to see a boomerang.
I would like to just mention the contract for weapons detection systems, because it is unusual for us to do something under an urgent necessity. But given the events that happened at the high school and at the middle schools, you know, recently, it's important that we come up with the right approach for keeping all of our students safe. And it's been an enormous amount of work on the part of many people to try to figure out what's the right approach for our district. And thank you to everybody who's been working on this, because we need to get it done.
Yeah, and I want to personally thank Ricky Waters, our head of security, for all of the coordination he's done to make sure that we had the opportunity to go visit different places, see the weapons detection systems and how they've worked. And I want to also thank the other organizations that allowed us to come in and do that and allowed us to ask all the questions we had about what was working. I also want to thank George, Paul, both of you have put a lot of time in, and Sean Patton also put a lot of time in. Phil Trimble, fellow board member. I were driving around on a really cold, rainy day, going to a lot of places with some of these folks, so thank you very much.
Field trip.
Field trip.
Yeah, not the sort of field trip that you want to take, though.
It has been...
boomerang.
Um, I would like to just mention the contract for weapons detection systems because it is unusual for us to do something under an urgent necessity, but given, um, the events that happened at the high school and at the middle schools, you know, recently, it's important that we come up with the right approach for keeping all of our students safe. And it's been an enormous amount of work, um, on the part of many people to try to figure out what's the right approach for our district. And, um, thank you to everybody who's been working on this because we need to get it done.
Yeah, and I want to personally thank Ricky Waters, our, um, head of security, for all of the coordination he's done to make sure that we had the opportunity to go visit different places, see the weapons detection systems and how they've worked. And I want to also thank the other organizations that allowed us to come in and do that and allowed us to ask all the questions we had about what was working. I also want to thank George, Paul, you're, both of you have put a lot of time in, and Sean Patton also put a lot of time in. Phil Trimble, fellow board member, and I were driving around on a really cold rainy day, going to a lot of places with some of these folks, um, so thank you very much.
Field trip.
Field trip.
Yeah. Not the sort of field trip that you want to take, though.
It, it has been one of those, um, you know, it is, it's a very, very sad, it's been very sad work for all of us. Um, but unfortunately, just simply necessary. Um, and I think it's important for us to, to really, to do point out the fact that we do not, um, use our ability to declare something urgent, um, often. I can't remember. Well, I don't know if we ever have since I've been on the board.
I, I don't remember anything.
I know some, some, um, governmental bodies do that a lot. Um, and I'm not second guessing them, I'm just saying that this is something very unusual for us, but obviously, this is an emergency.
And the reason it's an emergency is because Superintendent Kirby made a commitment to come up with something for the new year, and this is what's going to work.
And the new year is upon us, so thank you for all your work.
The other thing I'd like to point out that in looking at the systems that we looked at, one of the things that, one of the reasons we particularly liked this system is it's not looking at individuals, it's looking at what they might be carrying. So I think it was the most equitable thing that we could have. I mean, we're not pulling people out, you know, randomly, we're not pulling people out based on profiling. If you walk through the system and the, you know, green light turns red, we're going to pull you aside and, and then you're going to be wanded and whatever. And, you know, this, we're looking at other systems as well to complement this, but we knew we needed to start with something, and we needed to start with something in the new year.
Um, and, and I know, Jody, you definitely alluded to this in, in that, you know, thanking people, uh, who worked on this, but, um, I think to, to Dan's point, uh, about this being a resolution of urgent necessity, a lot of due diligence went into this process. This was not an overnight process. Um, and in fact, when we had a second security incident this year at the high school, a lot of the feedback that I got from parents was, "How come we can't just go get metal detectors, more, more equipment, more stuff?" And it's, this is not the kind of stuff that you run down to Home Depot and just grab. Uh, there's, you know, vendor meetings and looking at all the kind of pros and cons of the different systems, uh, and, you know, doing due diligence with, uh, you know, third-party organizations that are already investing in these ways. And so, um, you know, like Jody said, I just want to echo that, that, you know, the, the team here really did a, a really, really strong job to kind of leave no stone unturned and make sure that it's a wise investment.
Yeah, because I know several of us changed our minds.
Yeah.
Based on what we saw. I mean, from what we initially thought, and then you see it in action, and you, I mean, it certainly changed my mind on what I thought we should be getting.
Also, though, I think we, we need to, we can't forget to really recognize the incredible ability of our building-level staff to pivot.
Several times.
And to meet the need where it exists, and, um, God, they've been amazing. Um, the people actually doing the work, uh, and our teachers for pivoting and, and being flexible, and it's really been, uh, a district-wide, um, problem to solve together, so.
Yeah, and I, and I would add on to that, Dan, that, uh, that this isn't, I don't think anyone in the district is seeing this as a, uh, a single solution to a problem. This is just a layer upon other layers that have been in place, uh, and other layers that will be put into place in the future, uh, that this is, you know, a real kind of belt and suspenders, you know, both approach.
This is a wraparound of the one, of the system that works the best all the time. See something, say something. And that's about relationships between our kids and the adults around them, and that has been what has shown time and time again in this district to be the saving grace. Um, and so you're absolutely right. This is not the magic bullet. This is a tool within the tool belt.
But it's also something that we can use, um, to share with our community, um, how safe our schools are, that although we have had incidents, um, we can use this tool to show also how safe our schools are and that students feel safe. My daughter's a 12th grader, and we still have conversations, and she shares, you know, she doesn't feel unsafe at school, even though these incidents have happened. Um, and even with the bringing in of the metal detectors, um, you know, that hasn't made her feel safer. You know, there never was a, an insecure feeling that she had in school.
That's great. Not to put you on the spot, Liz, but I know that Superintendent Cadre has, this has been a, a big topic of discussion. Could you, you know, uh, extemporaneously raise up some of their, their thoughts?
Yeah, Superintendent Cadre's been very busy this month, um, and I'll talk a little bit about some of their projects, but we discussed, actually during the November meeting, uh, they gave some feedback on our new security processes, had some suggestions, and then offered to, um, actually develop a subcommittee of the cadre to be an advisory group to Mr. Waters, who is our supervisor of security. So they have met with him, um, shared their observation, shared their observations, and, you know, now have a cycle of feedback where they, they will meet with him and share, um, things that they think are working well, things that can be improved. They even talked about wanting to do something special for, um, recognizing the security team at the school as well as a part of their work. So, um, it's been, been good, and they've made really good observations. And Phil, I appreciate you coming to the last cadre meeting. You can see it as a...
Crashing the party.
Oh, yeah. Um, but yeah, so that, so we now have that, uh, that student advisory committee, um, working directly with Mr. Waters and his team.
I'm really glad because that was one of the things that came out from the Safe Schools Advisory Network, the group that, you know, the consulting firm we were working with. They, you know, they said, "Talk to your students. Your students know what's going on. Your students are the ones who can tell you where they, when they feel, you know, if there's any, you know, holes or moments of the day when they feel unsafe or when they think that there could be an issue." They said, "Your students will, will be able to tell you all of that."
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda?
The only thing I just want to add is, um, certainly our, our school staff, our teachers, our school administrators, you know, this has been a, a big pivot and a big, a super big shift that everyone has had to make from October through. And, um, here at the district, I mean, we, we referenced, um, Paul and George and Sean doing the visits, kind of going out and looking at those systems, but, you know, I have to say, uh, Dr. Jenkins and his team have been holding down like our academic work because we really were not able to focus. Um, those first three weeks, we just focused on this. Uh, both Rachel Coleman and Allison Byrd have been like such great advisors to our school leaders as they have kind of navigated, um, these shifts, um, not only looking through processes and procedures, but also kind of talking through the human side of the work as well and being kind of cognizant of, of change management. Um, and so I just want to really just, you know, express my appreciation to that team as well, doing that while doing many other things at the same time. Um, so thank you. And it's just the board for your support and full investment in a very difficult time. You know, there were some hard conversations that we had, um, but, but the commitment remained strong, so.
And Liz, I'd like to also thank the, um, administrative team at the high school.
Hmm.
Because I know they had some really hard days.
Mm-hmm.
And they had to pivot, and they had to come up with a plan.
Late nights, early mornings.
Weekends.
And weekends, yes, yes.
Right, that first weekend was pretty rough.
So I just want to acknowledge their work as well.
Oh, and Caitlin on the communication side of things, too, because that's been a big, that's been a big, a big thing is, is when there's changes like this happening across the district, to be able to clearly get that word out, so.
And talk about someone who probably never sleeps. All right, if there are no further comments on the consent agenda, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hives?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Trimble?
Yes.
Mr. Crenshaw?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's update. I will turn it over to our superintendent, Elizabeth Kirby, for the superintendent's report.
Okay, so this update's going to take us from our last board meeting up to today. So there'll be some December items on here as well that I, you know, I just wanted to include, especially since we're close to the holidays. That opening slide is from the vocal music department winter concert, which was fabulous.
It was.
Um, and just wanted to, uh, share some photos of that. The students were, it was just such a top-notch Cleveland Playhouse Square quality show, Playhouse Theater, uh, quality show. Um, and so you see, um, the barber shoppers, what do you call them? Barber shoppers, too?
Yeah.
Barber shop girls and barber shop guys, is that right? Yes, and then the singers, um, together will be on the next slide, um, but just fabulous. There was even a, like a quartet that did a Hunchback of Notre Dame piece that they themselves decided that they were going to do. Um, it was their own practice. It was just, it was just fabulous. It was just fabulous. Um, so, as we go into the, this past month then, um, early in November, we had our annual professional learning conference-style PD, uh, some multiple sessions across multiple sites here in the district. Um, everything, um, from how to use NWEA map to restorative learning, to, um, our work around clarity, um, to great levels coming together to collaborate. So just lots of different things that staff had an opportunity to choose from. So thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and the academic services team, um, for, uh, shepherding this process. We also had a principal meeting in November, um, which was a day, a full day of, um, collaboration. Topics included recruitment and retention, data-driven decision-making, instructional strategies, um, addressing attendance, and teacher feedback calibration, uh, led by our chief of schools, uh, Rachel Coleman. In quarter one, we also completed the progress monitoring cycles for, um, all of our district departments here, so we engage in the same cycle that the schools do around looking at data and our strategies and seeing the progress that we're making. And at the bottom of that, you see all the singers together in one of their final numbers. Um, as it relates to our work around college and career readiness, there's lots of stuff going on. Um, we had FAFSA Family Financial Late Night on Tuesday, December 10th, so Bob Swaggard and the counseling team and our partners, uh, led this effort to give family support in the FAFSA process. I do want to say I looked at the FAFSA completion rates, um, for last year, and we definitely are ranking in the top in terms of the number, number of kids who've completed a FAFSA in our district, so, um, like, by double, double digits. So I really appreciate Bob's work, even though last year was a challenging year with the change to the FAFSA.
That was not easy.
There was a, a panel that was held by the counseling department for juniors, uh, featuring seniors talking about their experience so that, so that juniors can get ready for what their senior is going to be like. And tomorrow, our third annual College Career Connections Day at Tri-C East tomorrow, so anyone who is in the area, if you want to come out and see all of our middle school students, eighth graders together, hearing about the opportunities there, you are certainly invited. If you let me know, I'll let you know a good time to come because they will be moving and grooving across the campus tomorrow. And then...
Quick question, Superintendent Kirby. Um, I know we collect information or we report out the number of like scholarships that students receive at the end of the year. Do we also collect like their, um, acceptance letters, um, in regards to...
Um, you mean just to, well, we collect them as a part of calculating the scholarships?
Right, okay.
So like, that's the way that we verify that those...
But if they got accepted and maybe didn't receive...
And they didn't get the money. I, I'm not sure if they, if everyone does that.
Yeah, I think it may depend on what they enter into NAVIANS.
Yes, yeah. NAVIANS is where we keep track of all the information, um, but I don't know if they like turn them all in. Like, I know in Avid, they do like a board where the kids put all their acceptances up. I'm not sure if we do that.
And on the library windows, there are displays...
Of acceptance letters.
Of acceptance letters and things as well.
Yeah. But we are working with the, um, the counseling team on post-secondary, concrete postsecondary plans. They're going to be piloting, um, a process with a group of about, I think it's about 200 seniors. So I can ask them if that's a piece that they'll be doing. It'll be for seniors that are not in, you know, aren't in Avid, who, because we already know that they're getting, you know, very, you know, heavy, heavy support in that process. So I'll find that out. Um, in terms of career, we did have the grand opening, uh, reopening of the cosmetology salon. Yay. And I believe one of our board members received a haircut.
Exhibit one. It's exactly one week old, this haircut. And I want to thank very nervous Veronica for cutting my hair. I was her first shear-over comb haircut, and she was petrified. And we had a graduate from 2012 named Leslie, who helped her and showed her and reassured her that it was all going to be okay, and...
2012, wow.
Yeah. She runs a salon somewhere, um, but...
What was the process for getting your appointment?
Uh, showing up and waiting around, uh, followed by filling out a form.
Yeah.
You know, did I have any terrible allergies and next-of-kin contact? Should the barber take a knife to my neck or something? Um, but we don't have any barbers yet, so.
Is info on the website on how to, the other hours and how to sign up?
It was fun.
Thanks.
And it's been so long, you know?
Yeah, it has been. Uh, there was also a re, a, not a reopening, but the culinary, um, cafe at Warrensville also recently opened as well, so you can, um, either go there or get, order food for pickup as well. So we will, uh, share that information out in their menus. Okay, next. We are very excited that within this past month, we did receive a million-dollar grant from the Department of Justice to fund our social-emotional learning and climate support work. Uh, Sue Pardee and Dr. Abduzatar, um, were our leaders of this effort, um, and we will be sharing more specific information on this grant during other work session or board meeting.
Right.
Um, college and career readiness at Roxboro Middle School. In early November, there were career ac, career awareness activities that students engaged in aligned to our PACE program. They heard from industry professionals, um, they explored their own interests, and spent some time reflecting on their own anticipated career path. So we want to thank those guest speakers who were there to share their careers with the Roxboro Middle, Middle School students. And we also had character strong training, um, that was, uh, conducted in November. Uh, tier-two character, character strong training, just as a reminder, this is our social-emotional learning curriculum. From the field, I hear that it's going well, um, and that, uh, teachers, especially in the elementary school, really like, uh, the curriculum and feel like it's, uh, supporting, um, students. All right, this next slide comes from the past two days. Uh, so not only were, did this, the members of the, the student cadre develop an advisory group around safety, they also decided to engage in a service project reading to, uh, kindergartners in the district this last week before break. Um, and I want to thank the principals and kindergarten teachers that opened up their schools, uh, to students. Um, here, you'll see some pictures of kids engaged in reading. Um, we have, uh, some students, actually, we had two students that read to kindergartners in the same room where they went to kindergarten with the same teacher who was their kindergarten teacher.
Oh, my goodness.
That's awesome.
That was a Gary. So it was very cool, um, just to see that. And even, um, some of the students you'll see in the bottom-left corner, um, these, they, uh, just ran and embraced their third-grade teacher who ran and embraced them, like, they were so excited to see each other. And it just reminds me that students leave elementary school, they don't necessarily have a lot of opportunities to come back to the, to, as in high school, to come back to the elementary school, so it's a very cool project. I want to thank Mrs. Adams Fontanaz for coordinating this event, the food, the transportation, the books, the schedule, all, all those things. Um, and it was, it really was a, a great opportunity, so we'll be working on some other, um, projects for the spring, um, but I do appreciate it. The, the students look really tired at the, our students were really, and I said, you know, kindergarten, it's a different energy. It's just, you know, it is a different energy.
How do you wear out a high school student? Send them to read to kindergartners.
Yes. Um, they saw the dance break, and the kids did a dance break, so, you know, they see the dance break and all that and all the songs. It was really cool, so, and thank you to the students as well. Um, in terms of other family and community partnerships, we do have our Vision to Learn Program still going strong. They're completing exams now at Noble, where 70 students will receive full exams. The CLC at Noble is partnering with, um, the Title One lead, and they have Findaway and Hattie by Victoria Cole books that will be part of the family reading schedule. The Oxford CLC Winter Festival was held last Friday. I believe, uh, Malia Lewis was there.
Yes, and it was fun.
Well-intended, um, and lots of fun for students... Well attended and lots of fun for students before the break. And then tomorrow, we have the Noble and Oxford CLC working with the Church on the Heights and the State Club on expanding food access through a food market at the Church on the Heights. So, it will be available for families in Monticello, which is within the community for Church on the Heights. We also have been having, the renaming exploration process has been happening since our last board meeting. On the Fourth of December, we held a focus group at Monticello. There is both a staff-focused group and a community-focused group. Right now, I have been engaging and talking to the students as well to make sure that they get the information so that they can also participate in the survey. So, that survey will be closing tomorrow. And we will.
7:53 PM.
Sorry. It will be, and we will, the facilitator will be collecting and summarizing all of the information collected through this process. Additionally, in terms of families and community, attendance, attendance nudge letters were sent out in order to remind students who have missed 5% or more of student days. These are an opportunity for parents to know specifically how their students are doing. One thing that the attendance research shows is that often parents aren't aware of the number of days that students have missed. We also have, culture has kind of shifted since COVID in terms of how people view school attendance. And so, we're really just trying to share information so that parents are aware how important that, how important that in-school attendance is and where their students are.
Do you have any idea how many of those letters were sent out?
I don't know that. And I don't know, I will, I can, I'll get that information.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Off the top of my head. I don't know, because I know our numbers for chronic, but I don't know my, the 5% is less than.
Right, 5% is, is half, right? Because it's the 10% is the definition of chronic.
Right, so this.
But if we can war it off.
There will be a lot of students with 5%. Yeah. And then, you know, the number changes as the year goes. You add more days to as well to the year. And then, so these are some other efforts. Again, Dr. Abduzatar and Mrs. Coleman have been working with the attendance teams to talk about the different initiatives, how they're using their data, how they're supporting students and families around attendance. So, chronic absentee remains a big state and actual, national focus as well. So, we continue to look at that and work on that. Goals four and five, we talked a lot about this. So, we did do visits to Brush CMSD and the Palace Theater. We are giving the board's approval, purchasing the open gate systems at the high school. And we'll be piloting some scanning systems in January. The Safe School Advisory Committee did recommend that we have these systems also at the middle school. And so, when we get back from break, I'm going to schedule staff and parent meetings there as well so we can hear from those communities and also share the feedback from the committee. We tried to get it in this week, but it was just too much going on. So, we'll be doing that as we, as we come back for those schools. Since we've heard from Monticello, I think, you know, Monticello families, you know, just, you know, who have reached out individually, but we want to have a community opportunity for both middle schools to share, get that information. And then, in terms of our appreciation dates, appreciation celebrations for the month of November, school psychologists were celebrated in the month of November. I love the brain image. And we'll continue to celebrate, celebrate as those dates come up. So, what's coming up in Tiger Nation? So, we do have winter break that begins Monday. School Board Recognition Month is January 1st when we, as we come back. Our next Board of Education regular meeting is at 7:00 PM. Law Enforcement Appreciation Day is the 9th, and we have a work session on January 21st. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions on the report part?
With, with the open gates that we are purchasing, for the high school, do we have a goal date for when we want them? I almost said plugged in, batteries, batteries plugged in?
Well, they, the turnaround time is pretty short. So, once we get them in, is it like a couple of days? There's going to be some training too, yeah. So, it should be pretty fast. I don't know if it's like the first day kids come back, but I would anticipate probably by the end of that week.
Yeah, within the first week or two.
After the training, yeah.
Well, given what I've seen of our students and their willingness to just go with the flow as things change those first couple of weeks, I don't anticipate there being, you know, any trouble. They've been incredibly resilient and flexible and just like, okay, you know, today we're doing it this way, tomorrow we're doing it this other way. And, and the, the security monitors have also just been incredibly friendly and upbeat and, and just the way they connect with the students on their way in in order to not make this a terrible way to start your day has, has been very reassuring to me because that's the thing that has always bothered me. It's like, if you start your day with this, you know, basically security event, how does that change your mood for the whole day? And the staff have been amazing.
Well, in addition to getting it set up and getting the training done, there's also going to have to be communication just to warn people what, you know.
What the new procedures are.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? We have some policy readings, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Lombardo.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You'll notice there is a Policy Group A on the agenda. As you know, with our policies, we have multiple readings. I am asking the board for a two reading for these two policies. We have two policies that are related to religious expressions, and there are deadlines attached to those. So, I'm asking for the first reading to be today and then the final reading to be January 7th. I will be bringing a bunch of policies on January 7th for the first reading. That'll be Board Policy Group B.
And that's the first of three readings?
That would be the first of three. That's correct.
Is there a reason why these don't require three readings? Is it?
Yes. Our policy in general, to read policies, it just says multiple readings. So, one of these policies, if you look at 50, we have two policies in front of you. And Policy 2265 is due January 25th. So, I do want to get this done prior to that. And Policy 5200, Niola released these policies late this year, October 16th. This policy is supposed to be read by October 25th. So, we are a little late on this policy, but due to that students are going to be gone for the two weeks, we can get this done and put into, on the website by, by.
The deadline.
The deadline, yeah, it's the 7th.
So, I only, I have one, yes, question regarding the attendance policy. So, Policy 5200.
Sure.
On page three, the last paragraph, where we state that the family or the family must submit written requests to the principal 14 days after the start of the school year. So, my concern with that is that spirituality doesn't necessarily happen according to an academic calendar. And so, excuse me, I think we might should consider adjusting that in some form because if a family changes religious affiliations in the middle of the school year, then they won't be able to celebrate their faith in the spring, you know, in that instance.
So, I'm writing that down, and I will consult legal on that and bring that back to you January 7th.
Yeah, or, or a student who comes in mid-year, you know, or.
What is 14 days when they?
Of when they start. That's in a different section.
Nope, yep. Next line, next line. Although I think that's prescribed by law.
The 14 days?
Yeah. By statute.
Columbus.
So, I'll see if there's any workaround, even though it is within the law. I'll see if there's any workaround. But if, if not, we may have to leave that. Any other questions or information to gather? Okay. Thank you very much.
So, you'll be bringing this back to us in January?
Yes, yes. Thanks.
And the next item on our agenda is the Treasurer's Report, so I will turn it over to our Treasurer, Scott Gainer.
Thank you. So, we're taking a brief break from the three things. I know you all will be disappointed.
It was a completely different format.
Not 100% comfortable.
I know.
Where's the other two things?
Just for now, just for this, this one meeting. And the reason for that is, you know, as part of the, the board's desire for, for some time to have a dashboard of sorts on the website. I don't, I hesitate to call this a dashboard because in my mind, dashboard means real-time data. And so, that's not something that we, we have currently or can provide currently. But I think the, the idea was to be able to provide just something that was kind of a high level, something that people could look at quickly and kind of glean some information that we would periodically update. So, I just want to show everyone on the website now, under District, Finance, Payroll and Benefits. If you click there, the first thing you're going to see up here on the left-hand side is Finance at a Glance. So, that's what we're calling our dashboard. And if you click on that, you will see our Finance at a Glance, which is, again, our, our attempt to just kind of bring some high-level summary data to people if they just want to take a look. Obviously, we have our monthly financial reports that people can take a look at if they want to see.
But those are very extensive.
And then, of course, you can look at the five-year forecast or the, you know, the annual comprehensive report if you really like to get into the detail. So, what we have here, and again, this is, is a work in progress. It's the first draft. You know, we're putting it out there, but I would appreciate at any point if you could, you know, send me any feedback. And that goes for, you know, board members, staff, community, everyone. Things you might like to see, things you might like to see differently.
The only thing that I noticed was that you didn't have a code for your, or a key for your color code. If you scroll down a little bit.
Oh, yes. Yes, that's, that's something.
So, it's inferred by the relative sizes, but it wasn't.
Yes.
It didn't have a key.
Absolutely.
And it's a quibble.
No, no, I think that's legitimate. In fact, I think that's something that we want to definitely change. So, we will, we will, for the next iteration, I think we want to make sure, or at least we're going to start doing this quarterly, but we're going to, we're going to sync up with the calendar quarters. So, you'll, we'll have the next one of these in January for the quarter ending December 31st. So, we will absolutely address that issue, Malia. So, thank you. You know, and I even am toying with, although all of these sources of revenue, so we're seeing, and again, this is general fund, which is what the five-year forecast is based on, what our operating budget is. Some of the categories, although they're specifically aligned and right out of the five-year forecast that gets submitted to ODE, don't necessarily like the titles. I don't think they're necessarily descriptive enough or descriptive in the way we'd want them to be. So, we're going to change some of that. And I mean, even this one under general fund expenditures, I, because obviously I want to thank, you know, everyone who helped me with this and in particular, you know, Eric and Sandra in my office both, you know, played a large part in putting this together. You know, personal services, like are you sure that's not personnel? It seems like it should be personnel to me because that's your salary and wages. But that's what the state has it listed as, personal service. So, again, we stuck with the state descriptions here, but I think that we, we need to make some changes there. But again, just trying to give a quick, you know, here, here are the sources of revenue in the general fund for the quarter end. Here are the sources of expenditures. We also, under this next section, show our general fund monthly cash balance for the past three years at quarter end, also showing our student enrollment by quarter. This is information that's coming straight from Student Services in Terronica over there. So, we're just dropping that in. That's a data point that people wanted to see, so we put it in here. And then, we have, we wind up at the bottom here with a percentage at the, at year-to-date of, of general fund that we've spent and, and, you know, with and without encumbrances.
And that's the same as that green percentage bar on the.
You got it.
Full report, which I find incredibly helpful.
Yes.
That's been a great change.
And then, we have the additional resources. We have links right here to the five-year forecast and to the CFR if people are interested in doing a little deeper dive into that data. So, again, just, it's a first draft. It's, it's out there now and available for people to look at. But as you do take a look at it and, and people, you know, go through, any data that you don't see here that you think would be meaningful or helpful or anything that you think needs tweak, we would appreciate the feedback and we'll keep it, keep it moving, but.
Yeah, other objects is sort of a fascinating category.
I know, right?
Because it makes me think of UFOs.
Any other objects.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, yeah, so, so that was the one thing we wanted to bring to you. The three things will return in January.
We'll get away with it this time.
I'm sorry?
We'll let you get away with only one thing this time.
But, yes, so.
Well, just looking at the revenue, you brought us 53 million things.
There we go. That's right. So, we'll take every one of those things.
53 million small things.
All right. And that's, for me, other than just, as a, as a quick bite to say that we had the auditors in all day today. I think the audit for this fiscal year, or last fiscal year, I should say, is finally about over and should wrap this, this week, so.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yes. And everything looks good, so.
Great.
We'll report back on that in January as well. That's it for me.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the President's Report. And let's see. So, a couple of things, I think I mentioned last month that I was going to attend the Cleveland Heights State of the City Address, which I did, and the University Heights Civic Awards Dinner, where John Diligente, one of our teachers, was Teacher of the Year for the City of University Heights. And I want to thank all the staff who came out and supported him. So, that was great to have a whole table there of staff to support one of our teachers. Also, last month, I attended meetings for the Recruitment and Retention Committee as well as the Safe Schools Committee. And I attended the November Coffee with the Superintendent and Board President at Boulevard Elementary, where we had a good discussion with parents and we received feedback on a whole lot of topics. So, that was good. And that same evening, I went to the City of University Heights's Community Open House for the Taylor Road Condos, which are next to the Delisle Center, saw some of my colleagues there. And it was really nice to see the city's first new housing development in decades. So, that was, it was good. And it's one of our neighbors at Delisle. On December 3rd, Malia and I met with a community member who is interested in critical thinking and media literacy so our students are equipped to identify fake news. And he provided us with several resources, which I've passed on to Superintendent Liz Kirby and Chief Academic Officer Mike Jenkins. On December 6th, Liz, Mike Jenkins, and Principal Taylor Smith and I did walkthroughs of five of our CTE programs. So, we went to see Clinical Health, Marketing, Digital Production, Audio Production, and Exercise Science. And I really enjoyed seeing these classes, and I think in the future, the board should add CTE to its annual list of walkthroughs. And also, I'd like to see us honoring CTE students who obtained certifications at future board meetings. I think we should invite them and celebrate them just as we would any other students who are achieving great things. On December 7th, we had our Board Retreat for a deep dive on our district's finances. And I want to thank Scott for sharing his knowledge with us on that day. It was a scintillating Saturday afternoon. And on December 9th, I attended the Heights High Cosmetology Open House. I wasn't there in the afternoon for the actual appointment, so I did not get a haircut. But I did want to thank our student Samaria for giving me a tour. It was really nice to be able to meet with the students and, and just to talk to them about what they were learning, what they liked about the program. And one of the interesting things that I heard, I kept asking students, you know, what would you tell prospective students of this program? What, you know, what would you wish they knew if you were talking to freshmen or sophomores who are considering or thinking about this? And the thing that was really interesting was they all said, they need to know you don't have to have any cosmetology knowledge to join the program. They all said that there's this perception that you have to already know something about doing hair or doing nails or doing makeup in order to sign up for this program. And, and they really emphasized, no, that. And, and they really emphasized, no, that that's why you take this program to learn. And, and it was just, it was really, really interesting. And then the other thing that I heard over and over again is they said they wish some more men would consider cosmetology as an option. Maybe if we end up with barbering at some point, that that would happen.
There was a lot of discussion about barbering while I was sitting in that chair.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But it was interesting. And, and just a reminder once again that the cosmetology program at Heights is once again open to the community by appointment only. And you can find the info about their hours and prices on our website. And that concludes my last President's Report for 2024.
Ooh. That was quick.
Year goes by fast. And so are there any board committee reports? That would be the next thing on our agenda.
So this past week, I attended the Equity Committee Meeting. And we just continued to talk about how we can move forward the equity initiatives in our district. We also did an interesting game called Philosophical Chairs, which was new to me. So I really enjoyed it. So thank you, Ms. Coleman. I also attended the Athletic Boosters Meeting. So I can report that all of the winter banners, at least the photos, have been taken. Some of the banners, I believe, have already been put up for students. So they're just continuing to move that work forward and think about how we can continue to support programs who don't have those boosters behind them.
Did anyone make the watch party?
I made the watch party.
And how was that?
It was nice. It was, it was an intimate, it was an intimate crowd.
I was there at the tail end.
Yes, yes. Must have just missed you.
And I got to tell you, speaking of athletic boosters, I attended the Heights versus Glenville game at Shaker last weekend. And it was the best high school basketball game I have ever watched.
Wow.
Those players were, I mean, they were running hard the entire game. They were, it was great. I mean, both of those teams were fighting like, there was no tomorrow. I mean, it was a really clean game, but they were, they were just playing hard. And it was, I mean, it was close the whole time. My buddy and I were just on the edge of our seat. It was fantastic.
I think there might be a couple former Heights students on the others, on the Glenville team. So that made it, may have made it a little bit more, you know.
Ice stinks.
Yes.
It was a great, great game.
A little redemption.
The refs let them play. It was, it was great. Loved it.
I will also say while I was at the tailgate that if you watched the Browns game, then maybe you saw the highlight of our high school there. Yeah.
Yeah. NFL Films were clearly at Heights High last week. Yeah.
Great. Any other board committee reports?
The Heights Schools Foundation has our big meeting this Thursday, actually. Looking forward to, to that. Again, we are celebrating the Jubilee of Heights High in its current location on six-two-twenty-six, or six-twenty-twenty-six? Anyway, in twenty-twenty-six.
Six and a two.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of twos and sixes in there. A hundred years of the school in that location. It is going to be quite a, quite a party.
I was just scanning my calendar to see if we have a Safety Committee meeting on the books for January. Do we, do we know if we have one? It might be good, if not, to get something relatively soon after, or maybe, and maybe even to meet there one morning and kind of observe the process after they've had a couple of days to shake the, shake the, the bugs out. Twenty-seventh, okay.
Thought we had one, but we might want to have a check-in earlier depending on when we get the systems up and running, but, okay.
This is not an official committee, but I did participate in the Roxborough Middle School Spelling Bee as one of the judges. And it was great. It was fantastic.
Do you remember the last knockout word?
No, but I have it in my notes back at home on my desk. It was, you know, we thought we had a winner and then they have to have a last round where the last two competitors get another round and then that didn't work out. So then we kept going for another round. It was, it was very exciting.
Nice.
And fun. So, that's good. And the Oxford Winter Fest was delightful. The kids were having a blast. There was a really good face painter there. And the line was all the way across the gym to get your face painted. And the kids were just, they were having so much fun. It was wonderful.
So any new business? Any unfinished business?
I guess this is sort of new business. I attended the Cleveland Heights Sustainability Committee, Sustainability Committee Meeting this afternoon. We have, as a district, been invited to the table as part of Cleveland Heights's, I'm going to get it wrong. It's called the CARP, I think, which is the Climate something. I have it written down for a reason. The Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. That's what it is. The CARP. I keep seeing fish. And so the, the City of Cleveland Heights wants us to be one of the partners in the, you know, the figuring out how we implement this plan once the plan is finalized. It's open to the public for feedback. And I, I'm sure you can find it on the City of Cleveland Heights's website somehow. I just have a link in an email that was sent to me. And I think there are ways that the district can become active in some of these implementations. I mean, you know, obviously, police cars are not our bailiwick, but there are other things that perhaps we can be part of.
University Heights is starting a similar effort. So I got an early email about that.
Right, makes sense.
So we'll be asked to tap, I'm sure we'll be tapped to participate in that one. I did ask them, well, are you coordinating with Cleveland Heights? Because a city that's, yeah, yeah, there's so much overlap. And I think by working together, it would be more effective than trying to do things individually, but.
Especially because the district is going to be invited to both and the library system, ditto. It starts becoming repetitive.
Right, right. Yes, absolutely. But thank you for attending that. Appreciate it. Thank you for representing us. Is there any correspondence and announcements or any, well, any unfinished, unfinished business? I should ask for that first. Correspondence and announcements? No? Well, then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So motioned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heights?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Trimble?
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a great winter break. We are now adjourned for the evening.